I would just like to thank everyone for being here this evening. I know we're having to play a little bit of musical chairs. I apologize, this room can be a little bit tight for this many people. I really don't have any comments to make, other than we appreciate the Board of Education and staff being here this evening, and we look forward to your presentation and questions that will follow afterwards. And is your chairperson making them presentation? I will turn it over to Ms. Boyd.
Okay, for Board of Education, I do need approval of the agenda.
May I have your approval?
Thank you, Honors and Praydon. Aye. Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much for our third meeting. I've been here in Union County, I guess, twelve years, and I think this is good to have three meetings with no lawyers present and no board team. So, this is actually very welcome. And thank you so much for hosting and for the continued dialogue. I think it's been great. I know that Chairman Luskey and I have frequent conversations that are very productive and between our staff, so thank you. And with that, let's get started. Oh, I do want to say that Mr. Martin cannot be here tonight, and he is not on the Facilities Committee, but he took the initiative to put this presentation together that I'm actually going to present. So, while I would like to take credit for the words, it is his, and I do want to, in his absence, give him that. And Ms. Howes had a prior commitment and couldn't be here, so I just wanted to make sure to give credit where credit is due. So, moving about the background. The Union County Administration Facilities Committee and Board came up with our Community Facilities Equity Plan. And our three focus points, as you will see, overarching throughout this plan, is stability, keeping children in their current schools and classes equity, providing capital improvements in the past to fall schools, and mobile classrooms. Removing mobile classrooms where long-term capacity forecasts project the need for brick and mortar. And you'll see we're going through here that there will be a few schools that will keep their mobile classrooms, because you will see that eden flow as we've talked about. But for the most part, that is our outline for that. And as we've seen, being here, especially from a newcomer like me that came in 2004, we've seen explosive growth in the West, and we have seen the building of the Marvin Cluster and Cutler Center. And the folks who are on the East have all put in their tax money and their time to get those schools up and running, because the growth they gave you, we had no choice but to build. And it's time that we look into the equity for the other schools that have been waiting for their term. So, what is our plan? Oh, and let me stop here and say that I did get your questions. We all got your questions. And what I have hoped to do is answer these questions throughout the presentation. So, my goal is to give the presentation, answer the questions, and then I'm going to sit down, and Chairman Luskey and I are going to facilitate the discussion with the board. So, what is our plan? As I mentioned, the Community Construction Equity Plan, or the CCEP, as you've heard it, is a bifurcated plan. It's a two-part. And the Board, the prior Board, before I came on, they're working on this for quite some time, and they recognize the need to have a long-term plan. And what this plan took in account was the facility study. It took in account facilities' needs and condition assessments. These site-based teams at each school had input, which includes teachers and parents and community. And they put in everything together, and then they said, okay, well, this should be taken care of through operation and maintenance. This should be taken at the school level. And so, what we have here is we've got the eight-year capital construction plan, which is, as we like to say, our PEGO. That is what you all are funding for us, you know, our seventeen million, our nineteen million, twenty-three million, though. And so, that has been asked, so the PEGO. And so, the second part, the six-year major projects plan, is what you will find in this bond resolution, the brick and mortar, as we like so fondly to call it. So, again, the six-year major project plan addresses our three focus points. It touches twenty-seven of our fifty-three schools. And here you will see that this plan gives us three thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight brick and mortar seats before MCRs. And once you take the MCRs, there's a hundred and twenty-three total MCRs that will be removed as part of this plan, so that's two thousand, nine hundred and two seats, which is a net gain of four hundred and ninety-six. And the math adds up. Also, for the question, this plan includes the updated McKibben. And while we're speaking on that, as we all know, the McKibben did not address the charter schools, and it also did not address the new bypass. So, in this, you know, we know that the charter schools, the number of seven hundred and fifty kids have come up, which is an elementary school if they were all placed in the same place. As we know, it's not so neatly tied up like a rope bow. So, if you take seven hundred and fifty kids and say divided by fifty-three schools, that's fourteen children per school, just as an average, because we really don't know where all those kids will go. An elementary school, that's sixth grade, so that's two point three three students per grade with five or six classrooms. So, that's kind of how we're looking at the seven fifty sprinkled throughout all fifty-three schools. Also, the bypassing, you will hear me mention this in the presentation, but those two things were not included. But these numbers are the updated McKibben numbers that we all received. Now, I have this slide here merely to see, you'll see the updated number of two twenty-seven, four sixty-two, three fifty-three, because we took out Benton Heights, because that was funded through our PEGO. And this, I'm not going to get belabored on this slide, this is just to show that we're in an area with Charlotte being our central, and that our outline is they're all showing growth and showing needs for bonds. So, it's not just us. As we can see, our local school boards and local counties around us are going through the same thing. So, that's basically what we want to show with this slide. And this is a construction map. If you see here, all of these dots are giving county school look faces, and the stars are what's going to be touched with this bond.
Is it doing its own thing?
It does.
You may want to use just the key words.
Okay, maybe.
Use the keyboard.
Yeah.
May I have a question for you?
Sorry.
I'm just driving.
This thing, I don't know. Okay, I can, I can, that's what I'm used to. So, you can see the stars are all of the location for where the construction. And as you can see, it touches the county, its fans, it's not just centrally local or more than that. So, I thought that was a very interesting slide. And then construction calendar, we've all, we've seen this before, but you can just see how, where it starts and pretty much. Okay, so the rationale, the question is why bond in 2016? You know, we believe along Dr. McKibben that this is a solid plan utilizing the best data available that addresses our three focus points, stability, equity, and MCRs in a timely manner. And Dr. McKibben said that the longer you allow things to sit, the more the problems multiplying. This year and two years, and this presidential election is slated to be a very hot election. We expect seventy-five percent of Union County to come out, and we really want this bond to be a bond of the people. Let the people decide whether these are the projects that they want to see for their county. Let them speak for or against, one way or another, but we think it's important that the people speak. Okay, well, before I get to, I want to take a minute and make sure I answer a few things. I know that we got some questions, and just to give a little premise, when we would take it into account, our operational and our additions, we did consider operational impacts in this, and we will have to budget some additional. And so, the good things is the best kingdom in MCRs way, they're really hard to cool and heat. It takes a lot more energy to heat and cool an MCR than it does brick and mortar. So, that's one place. But yes, we did take that into consideration, and we will have to budget that. It won't be for a couple of years that we see those effects, but yes, we did take that into consideration. And another overarching is will our renovations and our additions last twenty years? A bond notice twenty years, that's a very important question. And while we are fiscally responsible and we're stewards of the money, we don't build cheap, we build solid. And we do have some schools that were built in the fifties, and they're still there, and they're in a good, solid foundation, and that is our plan, and I've been assured that any renovations or additions that we have will last for twenty years with the appropriate maintenance and upkeep. Now, what other alternatives have been reviewed? As I've said before, we went with this plan, and it's been three years in the making. So, with everything, sorry, this is the plan that we came up with. And if this plan is not approved, and this bond is not approved, then we'll have to, I don't want to say start from scratch, we'll have to roll up our sleeves and take another look and figure out what our next steps are. So, we didn't come, this plan is very intricate, it's very deep, it took a lot of detail, so we didn't come up with a plan A and plan B. This was the best plan based on all of our studies, with our community, our teachers, our principals, and our staff. Also, we've received seventy-one million and change since 2014. So, how does that impact this bond? Well, that money was not for any brick and mortar at all. It was mainly for roofs, it was for the Piedmont Stadium, it was for security and safety and fencing, it was for capital repairs and some ADA repair. So, it was not for any brick and mortar, minus Benton Heights, that's three point five million of our Benton Heights. I wanted to cut off on that. And then, one other question I want to address right now is, was inflation included in this? And it was not. And I know that Dr. Webb has had some discussions, I think maybe with Mr. Yates, if I'm not being too bored, saying that, to let you know inflation would have to be built in this number, so I just wanted to let you know that they are not in there. Okay, so now we can go to the project details. And we've got Newtown Elementary. Now, this is one where we had a little over a thousand children there, and you can see the trend for McKibben. And MCRs, now, what we're trying to do is start from now and move forward. We all know what's happened in the past, decisions that have been made, but the point is here is to remove the MCRs and add the brick and mortar, because for the next ten years, you can see that upward slide is going toward a thousand. And of course, you can see, you know, I don't read, you can see the resource room, the people work rooms. And there was also a question that said, if it grows, when would we see the next addition? Whether it would, we, our policy has said that our elementary school will be a thousand children, so that's what it will be, a thousand children.
There's a quick question, Mike. Can you show six classrooms, that, how many MCRs are there?
Yes, sir.
So, there's six MCRs there?
There's six MCRs if you can. And some of them are like-for-like, and some aren't, but here there are six. Yes, sir. Western Union. Now, this is the one where, you know, we're putting a lot of money, and it was built in nineteen fifty-five. This one's in, yeah, we would, we would love to have a new school. This Western Union has the space on the land, but we're being fiscally responsible, it would cost about seventeen million for a new school. We do have some, we see some numbers that were provided per construction. And we did take a look at DPI, and they were a little bit, they were all a little bit higher, but they were a little bit higher than the ones there. So, you can see that with Western Union increasing it to seventy-five, and those numbers indicate that along the way in the next ten years. Okay, Piedmont Middle School.
Excuse me, please. Can I ask, can you explain, so I can understand a little better, the current watch, current cap, a little bit description of those two as we go through this?
Oh, oh, well, I'll just say it, because it'll be the same. The watch level?
Yeah, current watch and current cap.
The watch level is when it gets to those kids, we keep an eye on it, hold it, keep a watch. We keep an eye on it, because it's creeping up. And the cap level, that is where we would start considering stopping anybody else from coming to that school. That's what cap means.
The cap and capacity are the same thing, correct?
Right, for the, you know, once we, and some of them, like when we had Newtown, we built it to a thousand, and we actually do the work, then cap and capacity will become the same thing. When you get sixteen hundred at, like, the middle schools, you know, like, so when we renovate, we get them to where they need to be, cap and capacity will be the same thing.
In your meeting, I believe it was March first, Dr. Webb stated the cap number isn't a capacity.
It will be.
No, he stated it is. And he went on to say, cap and capacity is the same number, and core capacity is the max number to meet, that can meet the needs of the kids. So, I think my question as we go through this, what is capacity? And how is it calculated? Because I've heard capacity, cap, watch, and if I listen to Dr. Webb, and I know he was an architect of this, what is that capacity? Because he's saying capacity is cap.
Well, I can tell you what he said to me, and, you know, listening to meetings, I'm not going to dispute that, but I do know that one of the things, when we have our plan, when we touch a school and we renovate to, say, a thousand, that would be cap and capacity. But there are schools right now that the cap and the capacity, you know, are a little, are a little different.
Well, let's take Newtown, for example.
Okay.
The cap level that you showed from your enrollment number is a thousand.
And then, go back, okay.
And you show the current capacity is a thousand. So, how do you increase it to a thousand when you're?
This one, this is showing, once we do the new project.
Your enrollment number from December shows the cap level, which is the capacity. Dr. Webb, is a thousand students.
Right, with the MCRs.
With the MCRs.
Right.
So, you're not gaining any benefits.
No, that, like I said with this one, this one is to take out the MCRs. You're absolutely correct. There is no gain with Newtown. This is because for the next ten years, we see we're going to be there, it's to take out the MCRs. It is not to increase capacity, right, and that's what I figured.
But the capacity's going down over the next ten, the number of students enrolled is going down over the next ten years.
Well, it's gone down from where it is, but it's gone nine nineteen, nine twenty, nine eighteen, nine oh two. And, you know, this is just an estimate, you know, while we are good with McKibben, because he came in under two percent over a while, that's just, you know, what this plan, nine hundred, you know, a thousand, but we do have a thousand, a thousand twelve right there.
But you're asking to spend three million dollars and add zero seats?
Absolutely. It's because of the third, because of the stability and the equity as we move the MCRs. And so, we can go through the whole, because that might be the premise, I think you're going to have that question a lot.
I would like, as we, before we go any farther, I'd like somebody to define what capacity and how you come up with those numbers, because that's the question that I've had. And all of this is tied back to capacity. If someone can tell me how you determine those numbers and who is involved in that?
Right.
And is there a formula that we can look at? Because I see a lot of different numbers.
There is a formula. I don't know if, Don, if you want to speak to it, there's a DPO or a Jo that, Mr. Delany, there is a formula that comes from DPI.
There, yes, you have classroom capacity, and then we came up with watch level and cap level. The classroom capacity is how many students you have, certain number of students per classroom, you have X number of classrooms, which gives you your seating capacity. Then you have the core capacity. We always make the core capacity larger than seating capacity, so if you need to have mobiles for a few years for a glitch, then you can add mobiles without worrying about having more space in the media center and the cafeteria, cafeteria being the driving force. So, Newtown, that configuration school was built for eight hundred and four seats, that's, I think, was thirty-six classrooms, and a core capacity of nine hundred, so we could put a few mobiles there. It was also designed to add on two classrooms at the end of each wing to take it to a thousand. So, by adding these classrooms, brick and mortar, we're taking the seating capacity to a thousand, which will align with the cap of a thousand. That's why we're seeing, in that case, the current cap, cap is capacity. We're going to put a thousand seats, but that's what we're going to cap, because unless we add on to the core, we don't want any more students in there. Because if you end up having four lunches, is good, it's okay, but when you have, when you start serving lunch at ten o'clock in the morning, have to have five or six lunches, it becomes a problem.
So, the core, the core capacity is with existing classrooms?
The core capacity is greater than the existing classrooms.
Okay.
So, we can add mobiles if we need to, for a while.
And how, what, is there a formula through DPI that's determined?
Yeah, well, it's not exactly a formula. When you go to DPI recommendations, they recommend twenty to twenty-two students per classroom, but it varies, K one, two, three, and four, five, on up, they have different numbers per classroom. That is their recommendation, so that's what we base it on. So, the K one has a different number than two, three, and four, five. But we end up with thirty-six classrooms, which is eight hundred and four students, seats.
How is core capacity determined?
Core capacity is by square footage of the media center and square footage of the cafeteria, depending upon three lunches or four lunches for the cafeteria, or in the media center, either four, four square feet per student or six square feet per student, depending upon how intense you want it to be. So, we have, we have a range we work into.
So, just, just from normal growth or kids leaving Newtown as an example, you will be, potentially you could eliminate two mobile classrooms? Is that correct? Twenty, twenty students per classroom?
They could, but, yeah, it's possible.
But that assumes that they're all in the same grade levels, et cetera. They're split out amongst six grade levels.
And it changes.
So, to, yeah, so to assume that we're going to be able to pull out two classrooms is not realistic, given they're going to be spread out more.
But you may not need six classrooms, because they're going to be spread out.
I would expect that we're not going to lose enough of those students in one grade level to alleviate one classroom.
Eliminate the need for one classroom, because it's, they all left at the same grade level. Unlikely. It can't happen, but it's not likely.
And the way, I don't know if you, how much you drive around, but there's a lot of dirt being moved, a lot more than any of us thought.
No, but Dr. McKibben took that into account.
To a certain extent.
Every permitted, according to his presentation, every permitted development was included.
Permitted previous, not future.
Correct, but he also saw the demographics changing in the county.
Yes, that's right.
And even a former chairman made the comment, statement, that he does not believe that new schools or additions are needed, because the total population of the county from a student standpoint is decreasing.
Well, that's one, one chance that, that, that's not, I mean, that's one person's opinion, he didn't speak for the board when he said that.
Okay.
So, okay, let's see, I think we will, at Piedmont Middle, and this is going to go. So, the fourth behind, the fourth behind this, you can see it's increased to the twelve hundred. You'll see it Piedmont Middle, Sun Valley, and Porter Ridge. The driving force behind this is to get larger cafeteria, larger media center, larger kitchen, and the admin offices to bring them to the front of the building. Currently, they're a little bit further back, and for safety reasons, it's great to have your admin and people come in, be right to the front. So, that's what you see there, removing those into the four classrooms, and you'll see the trend for Piedmont. Now, Porter Ridge. Now, Porter Ridge is, yeah, I'm like, there's your glass, I'm going my way. There we go, Porter Ridge middle. Increase that to a sixteen hundred capacity. Now, here is one where you'll see that the bypass could really affect this one. And one of the things you'll see in both the Porter Ridge is, if you look at the numbers, they increase. The trend is increase, increase. There's no decreasing. And when you have a school like Porter Ridge that's on the border of McQuarrie, it's at that bypass, it made no sense to account for that growth. There's some new subdivisions, and, and that's one of the things that Dr. McKibben, you know, said, he didn't take into account that bypass, and being so close to Matthews, and seeing that upward trend all the way out to twenty sixteen, twenty twenty-six, adding those fifteen classrooms and removing the MCRs and the teacher workroom, you can read that out. Here you see.
Jim?
Yes, this one.
Can you explain the impact that the bypass is going to have, why you're saying that's a future?
Well, you think, the thing is, it's, what I think the impact with the bypass is going to be commute time, because we find that people, when they come out of Union County, they're trying to live somewhere where they could get into town quicker, and we feel that this may be more of an option for some people, as opposed to right now, they may be, let's say, on the Marvin side or further out. But this will become more of a popular viable option due to the bypass to get into Charlotte. Monroe High School. Now, this one's going to be increased to fourteen hundred, I'm removing the MCRs, and this pretty much, and this pretty jumped, pretty much jumped. And what you see in areas like Monroe, you do have some trends, and some come and go. And there is a mistake that I caught between the budget request, it said four hundred, virtually fourteen hundred. This number is correct for increasing the capacity. I know that your question said thirteen hundred, but fourteen hundred is what we're working for with that, and you can see those numbers increasing.
The original proposal on Monroe.
Yeah.
Did it?
Yeah, it said twelve hundred on there.
It had, it had thirteen hundred originally, did it not?
Well, the one that I, I pulled up, because I always like to work with the latest one, so I pulled up the one that was in the budget request. And I was, I verified that three times with Dr. Webb, that it's increasing to fourteen hundred, and I spoke with Mr. Delany and Mr. Hughes as well, because it's, and I look, I just went as far back as the budget request that we gave you. I always like to go with the latest. I didn't go any further.
The last one, I'm trying to understand, I think the original, the original CCEP had thirteen hundred students for the capacity, and it was zero classrooms. And now you're going to fourteen hundred and adding eight classrooms?
But we're removing the MCRs.
But the original plan didn't take out the MCRs?
I just, I just went back to the latest, because if I, I've seen so many iterations, I get confused, I went to the latest.
But the number, the requested amount did not change, correct?
Correct.
That's right.
Correct, yes.
So, if you're going from thirteen to fourteen hundred, and you're going from zero classrooms to eight classrooms, how does the number stay the same?
Well, I've asked the question, I was told that it was a typo and not like a miss, because that's the first thing I thought, we're going to come in and look like you're thinking of the numbers, so. Let's see how many there are. There are seven MCRs currently at Monroe, and removing those, I'm getting eight classrooms for the seven MCRs. And these estimates, while we're talking about that, are new estimates, they're twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen estimates, I meant to mention that, not like the two thousand eight old estimates, or the bottom.
Okay, so these are not the two thousand nine facility study costs?
Correct, right, yeah, I meant to, good, I meant to mention that, so thank you for Okay, Porter Ridge High School. So, this So this one, again, just as the middle school, and it's increasing to eighteen hundred, because we can see the trend, the trend is going up, even since eighteen, ten, and twenty, twenty-six. It was just adding four classrooms and adding to the caf, the cafeterias. Mr. Hughes said that can give us a little bit more flexibility for lunches. Okay, so we have Rocky River Elementary School. And this is gonna be one of many, so I am going to explain this because I have the same question. When you look at this and you say that eight hundred and forty-two, but you're increasing to a thousand, and this school, along with several others, are Title I. And what you have in Title I is that you need more actual classrooms than you do in other schools. Because in order to get our Title I funding for that, our federal funding, you have to have additional resources, you have to have additional, additional guidance, different resources, smaller classrooms that comes with the requirement of a Title I. So while it increases to a thousand capacity based on the classrooms, it's the number of additional classrooms that we need for Title I schools that drive that. And so you'll see this, and I'll point out as we go through which one are Title I schools.
What's the current capacity of that school, ma'am?
Let's see, well, the one for, the twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, we just ended school, we're in seventy-one.
All right, and the current capacity is a thousand.
That's a cap.
Increasing to four thousand.
And how many mobile classrooms do they have now?
Let's see, at Rocky River, they had eight. Okay, and the transportation facility. This is a very good question, it's one that I had myself at a couple meetings back. It's a, why do we need a transportation facility when we've got some classes? Well, the force behind that is, we currently have about half of what we need per DPI. We have six bays, which is recommended for a hundred buses. And in order to, those two fifty to three hundred buses, we need thirteen bays. Right now, buses have to get worked on in parking lots, maintenance, it's a challenge. The transportation direct, transportation director, which is a manager, which is required to have a closed door to talk to employees, doesn't have an office there. Whenever we get, there's a storage, whenever we get tire deliveries, you know, they're stacked up. And this has just been a long time coming. As you can see, it's fifty thousand square feet, I think that may have been a question for the project estimate of twelve million. And, and one with that, the current warehouse place that we had there on Davis Street, after the new transportation facility is completed, this will add about ten thousand square feet, and we'll be able to bring warehouse, we have warehouse space right now over at Old Fairview. And we'll obviously, it'll allow us to move out of there and come in here to an area that's much better suited, we will consolidate all of our warehouses. It's not gonna be anything fancy, just, unless you can see it's not fully expensive, it's just gonna be a little, I don't wanna say timber, because that sounds bad. But you know what I mean, it's gonna be very basic, but it will service our needs. The facilities department will remain there. And currently, we just talked about in our open session, you know, we have to pay rent on storage space, and this will help us consolidate and bring all that down, and not have to pay rent, and then we can get rid of the Old Fairview, we won't use it for anything else. Okay. So, now. Originally built in nineteen sixty, we're gonna bring that up to the high school, up to seventeen hundred students. You know, Sun Valley is another one of those areas, even though, you know, Dr. McKibben took in overall, we're seeing, we saw four hundred units coming, we're seeing a little bit more out of that Sun Valley area than, you know, that, that's making us really comfortable. When you have this project, well, I'll, I'll put this here, I think I'll go to the next one, because this gives you a little bit more. What this hybrid concept does, is this life change, is to, we have currently, we have waiting lists for some of our academies. So we know, I know the question is, you know, what studies? We do have waiting lists, and we do have some additional academies that we would like to add, based on research. We talk to businesses, and they say, hey, we need X, Y, Z when we get out of school. We're looking at this shortage and, and these, and those are the academies that we bring. And this is a mission way to bring back career technical education to the twenty-first century. You know, back in the day when I was in school, you know, the kids would change their cabinet converters, and they'd do it with their lunch. Now, it's electronic, it's a whole nother way of doing things. And, and these partnerships and apprenticeships with Indian County businesses would be a great deal of career-ready graduates. Not everybody is college-ready, not everyone's gonna go to college, but they should be able to find something that will give them lucrative money to be able to not only sustain themselves, but their family. The cost to build the two separate facilities would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand, it's, I think, sixty million, excuse me, it's a thousand, a hundred and thirty-five million. Be about sixty million for Sun Valley. And then about seventy-five million for the ATC.
This is another one of those that the numbers changed, but the budget numbers didn't change.
Well, let me, okay, okay, why, okay, I was gonna, okay.
Originally, at Sun Valley, the sixty million dollars was twenty-two hundred students, and combined at a hundred and two, but now you're down to seventeen hundred students.
No, sorry, it's seventeen plus five hundred.
Five hundred for the ATC.
Right.
For the academies.
Yeah, the, and five hundred.
So it's still twenty-two, but the original proposal was just Sun Valley for twenty-two hundred, was it not?
Yeah, and a separate ATC building.
Which was another five hundred.
No, it was more than that, and it was just as expensive, it was like two high schools.
But, but originally, Sun Valley alone was going to be twenty-two hundred students at sixty million dollars. And then the ATC was five hundred per shift for the additional.
Now, what this number does not show is selling off the fifteen million. So I think that, so the, this number doesn't show that. Yeah, I just wanted to say that, but, just so we're talking on.
We're, we're going from twenty-two hundred for a high school to seventeen hundred for a high school, but the construction costs, or the estimate, didn't go down. The request is for the same amount of money for five hundred fewer students?
No, because we're adding in the advanced technical center as a part of the high school.
But the original high school was twenty-two hundred?
Yes, and the original ATC was seventy-five million, which I don't, I don't have, I don't know how many students that was, but that was almost three hundred thousand square feet. So we were looking at two different facilities and decided to combine it into one, and we end up with twenty-two hundred, but five hundred of those are CTE in the morning, and another five hundred in the afternoon. And then the South Piedmont could use it at nighttime. So it was actually seventeen hundred high school students in one part of the facility. And then another part of the facility would be set up for five hundred in the morning and five hundred in the afternoon.
Are those, are those coming in on buses?
I don't know.
Well, most of them will drop, and then look down, that the cost for this is a hundred and two if you do it together. So I was wondering if you could help. But they're looking at, a lot of them would be driving age, because this is, these are juniors and seniors that take this.
Is that fifteen million, is that how for Ben May?
I, I need to, and I apologize for springing this on you all, but in talking to Mr. Gates just a few minutes ago, and we didn't know this until just before we started here, actually, that property is security for our existing debt. So without eliminating the balance of the debt we have, that property cannot be sold off.
And what's the whoops debt, how did that happen?
It's security as part of some previous bond issuances that have been refunded. So to unencumber it, to be able to dispose of it, you would have to essentially refund those other issuances, which are a bunch of drubs and drabs of different issuances. Because in the two thousands, when they were building as much as they were, they weren't using geothermal, they were using other means to do it. So it's security sitting out there, along with a bunch of other schools and other property that secure that debt. So to be able to sell, you'd have to break it loose from that, that security.
We don't know specifically how much that debt is.
I don't know, I thought I had.
So you got a mortgage on it, basically.
Yes.
And I apologize that we didn't share that with you all, but.
We started doing research with our bond council and other projects, and this is one of the discussions we had. So we poured back through the bond documents in the last couple of weeks. And that's, that's what we found out to this point. I don't have a plan as to, if you wanted to liquid, if you wanted a liquidate to get out of it, I'd have to put that together and spend some time with bond council and our FAs to figure out exactly what that would mean to us.
And you mentioned it's car, five hundred cars a day?
Yeah.
Five hundred shits driving per ship. So what's the traffic impact? Has a traffic study been done?
Well, I asked the same question in our meeting, and the traffic study would have to be done by the department. And I was assured that there is ample space once they renovate to go around that, because I asked the same question, if someone else wants to answer.
Go around the?
That go around the.
So the entrance would be off of which road?
It hasn't been designed, but the, the idea is to move it to Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, sort of in the middle between Rogers Road and Old Charlotte Highway, somewhere in there, between the middle school and high school, somewhere in there.
Well, and they're already using that neighborhood as a cut through because of the traffic conjecture, so that would.
What neighborhood is a cut through?
The one just north of Sun Valley.
Well, it's not near that entrance, it wouldn't be near that entrance. And a traffic study may not need to be done, because we're not really increasing the capacity of what the school could be. We would talk to a traffic engineer, though, if we needed to. And a DOT, DOT could require us to do that, and the Town of Indian Trail could require us to do that. And if we had to do it, we'd do it, but it's not, it's a very minute part of the park.
And, and to answer that, and discussions with, with people, values around, what's your value?
Well, it depends on, when you have.
And how much land, I guess?
Yeah, and I went on a lot of websites, and I found a lot different than that. If it's somebody who wants to buy the property, it's low. So if somebody wants to sell the property, it needs to be high. So there's, there's a difference in, the value is what we can sell it for.
And I, and I sat down with the individual, supposedly the buyer, and he said five million dollars was the value.
And we had him buy it.
And the other question was that generally, you'd have to pay for the removal of that asbestos-filled building, so what's the cost on that? So utilizing expected money out of that piece is, is being very, very optimistic.
Talk about this.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Rock West, again, that's a Title I school. So you'll see the removal of MCRs for six classrooms, four space. So that comes into the same as the other. Winget Elementary, Title I school. Removing there are MCRs, doing twelve classrooms.
How many MCRs is there now?
At, at Winget, I have four, eighteen.
Eighteen.
I mean, I'm sorry, eighteen, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at, okay, I'm sorry.
And this is twelve classrooms.
Yeah, twelve classrooms, right.
And there are none at Rock West.
Right, I have none. Yeah, thank you. South Products, this was also a question of why this wasn't included in the annual. It's five million dollars, and it includes brick and mortar renovations, adding some security and system, and like, and, and it's a big lineup. There's a lot of work that needs to be done at South Products, it's an old school.
Where, where do the most of the students come from for South Products?
I think I can already count, I can, yeah, they're not a.
The Walter Bickett School here, they're all Walter Bickett, what's house there now?
Free K.
It's just Free K?
Free K, some, some special programs are.
ESL program?
ESL, casemetal.
Day treatment?
Day treatment, that's what I was trying to think of, day treatment.
How many students are at South Products, again? Instead of doing, I mean, instead of doing a lot of upgrading, would it be better to move it to a central location? Would that help with buses and transportation and?
You mean like another school?
Well, just, if you're gonna spend that much, would it be better to bring it in to a central location?
I don't know whether they can have a location to put it in.
Okay.
I think there's about a hundred students at South Products.
Yeah, I was gonna say, nine, two.
Hundred and five fluctuates during the years.
So East Elementary, that's another, that's a Title I school.
Middle, middle and high.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Yeah.
Um, that's a, this is a Title I school. Removing the MCRs, adding classrooms.
Removing, how many?
Five.
Five.
Union Elementary, remove five. And then again, that's increasing to the class, that's mainly the classrooms and the Title I and the resources that are needed there. So there's Elementary that, maintaining their six seventy, but removing the MCRs, because we see their trend does. Um, because you can see it stays on at the five hundred, but to be able to take the MCRs out and add in the classrooms will give us a little bit more play with the resources, removing the Title I school. Parkwood Middle School, as I noted with this one, this is the same where the, this project, the driving force is along with Piedmont and Sun Valley. It's to get enlarged the cafeteria, the kitchen, the media center, and move the admin offices to the front. And something to note, that a part of Middle, Piedmont, and Sun Valley, when you look at the square footage there, you may think, that's really good, but in those schools that are a little bit older, they have smaller hallways, and they actually are a bit tighter than what they actually look on paper. So it's very important to remember for the older middle schools when you're looking at the numbers. It's really about the actual usable as opposed to the, the. Again, Sun Valley, you find the same thing, as I mentioned there, they came at thirteen hundred capacity, but enlarge the kitchen, move that, and the admin offices, like I mentioned, I feel like the Brooklyn might be perfect. And then we have Weddington Elementary and Middle School, and this is together, because that school is, is joining, it's one of those, the Rocky Schools. And you can see what the elementary schools, enlarge the cafeteria, enlarge the kitchen, and the middle school is where you would remove the MCRs and add the classrooms. There you go.
How many MCRs?
Twelve total.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Some of them not being utilized, or?
Right, there's, but there's seven that are classrooms, because we had MCRs, and at some schools, MCRs aren't, all of them aren't used for classrooms.
Well, some are on the elementary side, and some are on the middle school.
The ones that we are removing for this project are over here on the middle school side, and that is seven.
How many, how many little classrooms are at Norman Elementary School?
Which one?
Norman Elementary School?
Zero.
Zero?
Yeah.
Their capacity's six hundred and five?
No, eight hundred and four.
Their current level's six hundred.
Their capacity, their classroom capacity's eight oh four, their current ATM is in the six hundred, seven hundred, something.
Now, it's all a thousand, so if we put more mobile classrooms, there could be a thousand. Just classrooms only is, is eight oh four?
We're not doing anything at Norman Elementary.
Ah, no, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Piedmont High School, increasing to sixteen hundred student capacity and four classrooms, two teacher offices, two teacher work rooms, two point, uh, two point one. And Hattaway. That would remove three classroom, MCRs and eight classrooms, increase to fourteen hundred. Um, and you can see the trend has been upward for Hattaway for the study. Monroe Middle School. Yes, Monroe Middle School. Increase to twelve twenty-five, remove, um, MCRs and ten classrooms. Um, and again, the twelve twenty-five with the eleven seventy-six, you really see at our Monroe schools, you see some, some flux at some point at any given time. You have a lot of students and especially after Christmas, you get some that go back home and end up come back. Um, and again, it's another one of those middle schools where the capacity is not the same as in some of our newer classrooms, where the hallways are tighter, it's not the same feel. Okay, and Prospect, we have an additional renovation here. Um, you can see this is built in fifty-three. And while this, what you see here is the sewer replacement and you see some much, much needed repairs. I know that, um, we were asked how much the sewer is for that and it's about six of the cost is what we found there for the sewer. But for Prospect, these are repairs that are desperately needed there. Um, Marshville, you look at the numbers, that's the new MCRs, just to keep it the same. It's classrooms, add bookstore, tutoring, work room. And then Indian Trail, I know that we were asked with Indian Trail and Henry Bridge, you know, the mountain's kind of small and why don't we do this in our capital? But it goes to our premise that brick and mortar is included in our two part. And this is actually, um, to, oh my god. To add conference rooms, work rooms, um, and to do some doors. But to add those conference and work rooms and those door, they found that money, it's actual brick and mortar. So we wanted to keep with the same pace and our definition as to what goes where. So that's, that's why I'm not here. And then Henry Bridge is the same thing. This school was built in the seventies and it had that open classrooms back then. So we need to enclose them and actually make them, um, you know, classrooms that we need today. Make this the way we need it today and renovate the media center and put in a few other items. And Catta Stadium, I know the question was asked, um, why do we need it? It's equity. There's, all the high schools have a stadium. Catta did not. Right now, they have to build a Walter Bickett, they have to be bused there and bused back. So they basically don't have one and all the other high schools do. And the PDC, Technology Services, um, this is home to our educators and where they go for training and to make sure that we give our due diligence and have a place, um, for them to get their training. Right now, it's always closed there, always. And we have to kind of call around and see what auditorium's available, where can we go? Have a nice place to let our teachers know we care about your professional development, any training. And we want to provide a place so that you can have your auditorium and more classrooms and group work room to the central place for our teachers to go and train and get what we go maybe. Next one says, the list is actually discussion before we had, have had some questions and questions whatever. I'm gonna take a minute and come back to the table.
We, uh, we've got about thirty minutes to decide the future of Union County.
Well, how many minutes?
That's not fair.
How many minutes?
We've, we've got our meeting starting at seven.
Okay.
So, um, if we would, I think we had some questions.
I'd like to make a couple of observations after having an opportunity to review in depth, first of all, the questions that were submitted by the board of county commissioners to Union County Public Schools. And I did not have an opportunity to read all of the five hundred and forty-one pages of your report here tonight. But a couple of things come to me, one of which of the twenty-seven schools represented. Eleven of them were built between nineteen forty and nineteen seventy-five. And of, of that eleven schools, approximately seven of them being Henry Bridge, Indian Trail, Marshall, Prospect, East and Winget. And I want to make a special comment about South Products. My question is, with the amount of money that is budgeted for the multi-year improvement, improvement plan, one of the questions that I highlighted that was in the questions from the commissioners that just stuck out in my mind, just because I saw it so often, is will these additions add twenty years of useful life to this facility? If not, how many years will this renovation add to the useful life of the building? So going back then to just as an example, uh, Indian Trail Elementary, uh, built nineteen forty. And then the fact that by twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, which is a long time from nineteen forty until that projected time, the enrollment in these schools will also decrease based on the information shared in our slide today. So I'm just not certain, and I'm not, have, was not assigned to be a member of facilities. So in whatever pastime, I have depended on the people who were assigned to facilities to when they met, brought recommendations to the board, that they had, you know, they were just sharing what was gonna be the best thing. But I took my time this time and read everything except the five hundred and forty-one pages. I just didn't get to make it through that. But where, where, can someone make some comments to me or for the benefit of everyone in the room? How eleven schools built from nineteen forty to nineteen seventy-five and approximately seven of those schools, the ones I outlined, will we really, with the millions of dollars that are slated to be used for each project, for each of those schools, by twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, what, what will we be doing with spending the additional amount of money for Indian Trail? And of course, you know, there are others, I'm not, I'm just spotlighting this particular school because it was the one, based on the information I had to review, that was built the earliest. So you add the number of years hence and the amount of money gonna be spent. Are we really doing the right thing? And, and I mean, that's just a question personally. Now, however it impacts anybody in the room, I don't know. I'd like to hear feedback because when you don't serve on a committee, you, you just, you know, you go by faith and you trust. But even though I voted for Jabar, you know, for us to be able to be here tonight, looking at it myself without depending on anyone else, it does seem like, you know, are we really gonna be making the best decision to request that a bar be put on? Because twenty twenty-five, I'll probably even be here, though these things won't even matter because my life may be over. But I'm here today and ask, asking this question today seems like a good idea to me.
I'd like to make a statement too and just talk a little bit about what we just heard. Um, you know, we, we talked about the dirt being moved and homes being built. But Dr. McKibben also said Union County was like a bucket with a hole in it and that, and we could grow as fast as we were growing in two thousand and five, two thousand and six and we're not gonna fill up these schools. Uh, there's a lot of things at play here, not just our two boards, but town councils all over Union County and what they will allow in those towns to be built and not allow in those towns to be built. Um, the hottest thing going is fifty-five and older neighborhoods because all the folks that we have here with their grandchildren, they want to come be near their grandchildren part of the year and then they want to go somewhere else the rest of the year. Uh, they can only, maybe there's only so much you can stand, I don't know. Uh, so we're hearing these things, these are the things that are coming to us from the community and the, and the discussions that we're having. Um, you know, looking at floating classrooms, we talked about that a little bit. Lance and I went to Sun Valley and there's fifteen empty classrooms at any one time in that school in the day. Um, just simple policies like the utilization of floating classrooms could save millions of dollars. You have, um, what you were, to your point, uh, Western Union has seven hundred capacity roughly, or seven hundred kids and then Prospect has about five hundred. I mean, you almost wonder if you could build a new school, um, brand new school, a whole thousand kids and not manage some of that and not do something good for that community at the same time. Um, you look at the, um, number of mobiles at Marvin, you know, there is, there are no mobiles at Marvin. There, there's six hundred two kids. If you'd have ever told me ten, fifteen years ago that Marvin would have been, um, that many kids, I'd have laughed at you. Um, twelve hundred and forty-six kids, that's how many were there when I was on the county commission in two thousand and three. Huge discreet difference in kids. When you look at Rayview, right down the road, they're looking at, been four hundred and eighty-six kids in, in just a few years. Uh, so you, you have, in Sandy Ridge, Marvin and in, um, Rayview, you have about eleven hundred kids in capacity right now that you could put that, that many kids at those schools. So one thing that I brought up and, um, you know, said it publicly, you know, why not let the parents of Union County, if they desire their children to go to these schools that are well under the watch list, uh, well, well under the number of watch, that they could take their kids, if they choose to take them to those schools, take them there. I believe you would have a huge re, reintroduction of children back into Union County public schools that we've talked about in our prior meetings that were missing these kids. These kids are going to charter schools, these kids are leaving the county and so does that money leaves with them. It has a huge cost to us. I look at, I look at the public schools as a, as a father, as a great place for my kids to go to school. And as a business person, I look at it as a huge opportunity wasted that we are losing kids to other, um, to other entities. Union County Public Schools is one of our biggest industries. If you look at it from the standpoint of payroll, jobs created, all those things. So why wouldn't we not want to gather that, those kids back in Union County public schools? And I do believe if you had a policy of letting children go to these schools, if a mother who works near, um, Weddington Elementary School could take her kid there, um, what, what does that do for the child? What does that do for that mother who's, you know, maybe not happy for whatever reason? Our son went to East Union, East Union had a horrible reputation, never, you know, I can't remember why his kid, oh, you don't want to go to East Union. Well, that was, that was bunk. Our son got a great education, he was second in his class. Um, he's at Catta and he's competing with all the kids all over the county, he's competing. And that education he got there, Kevin Blue was the principal, he did wonderful things for that school. So the things that we do, the, the energy that we concentrate on, these schools are not performing. Um, allow these parents who have children at new, um, new town, which is nearing capacity or almost overcapacity, allow them to take their kids back to those schools that are well under.
That is a policy, if you have a kid that's over capacity.
Right, but I would say expand it. These are, these Union County, your, your Union County public schools or our Union County public schools, every taxpayer in this county, whether they have children or not, Union County public schools belongs to them. And I think we look over that so many times and saying, that parent is struggling, that parent that's struggling, that single mom that is determined that her child's gonna get a better education, let them do it. Let them take them to the school that fits their needs. Catta fit our needs. Uh, we could have stayed at the engineering program at Forest Hills, but I didn't want to just do that. I wanted to see the education that my son got at East Union. And it worked for us, but we were lucky enough to get in the lottery. But you look at all these charter schools that have been built, they got lotteries, they got lists, you can't get your kid in there. It's, there's too, there's so many people applying to get in, you can't do it. Union County Public Schools are just as good. And if you allow kids to choose their schools, you allow parents and families to choose those schools, I think you'll see a huge increase. And people say, well, we'll lose all these kids out of our older schools or our schools that are underperforming. That's good too, because you tell us we need lower class sizes. We need less kids at those schools so the teachers can give those kids more attention than the other schools. So let's don't pack in the kids to our older schools. If we need to, to build new schools, then that's a plan that we need to develop. And, and this legislation, and I went to Raleigh, um, last week, this legislation is not designed to hurt you. This, this legislation that was passed last week is so that we talk like this. Because only through talking like this, only through communication, are we gonna be able to fix the problems. Because I've got people I can call when this meeting's over with and I can have them believing the worst in all of you. And you've got people that trust me already believing the worst in me and all's I have to do is open my mouth. But it shouldn't be that way. We can work together, we can plan together and we can build a plan that's gonna go through this county for, for many, long after five, ten, fifteen years. We can do good things for the kids, we can do good things for Union County public schools, we can bring money back in that our teachers need, that you need, but we need to do it communicating together. There's not one of these guys up here that, that have animosity toward you. And, and that court case, that, uh, that ninety-one million dollar verdict is done. And, and what we want to do is, I feel strongly that we want to work with you. We want to be a partner with you. I don't blame you for anything that you've done. And people say, why did they vote for this, why did they vote for that? Because you're a school board member, one of nine in a, in a district, most of you run out of districts. And why would you go against your district even if you don't agree with something that comes somewhere else? If the roles were reversed and we could send you a budget and say, here, vote for this, we wanted you to fund fire departments at twenty million dollars instead of ten million dollars this year. If, we want you to give the homeless shelter, um, a million dollars, not a hundred and fifty thousand. If we had to put those decisions on you, you would be frustrated with that. It's not frustration, it's, I understand, I understand what you're going through. I understand that you don't get your budget until, what, fall, mid-fall? Uh, I understand those things and those challenges that you have. But understand too that, that only through working together and agreeing on some things that we're gonna be able to move forward and again, get past the team now and get into the, what's gonna be best for the kids. Because a hundred and two million dollar high school, I cannot vote for that. I cannot, I cannot support that. I have parents telling me that schools are overcrowded. No, they're not. The school system is not overcrowded. There are schools that are crowded. The system as a whole is not overcrowded. And so, oh, you're gonna bust my kids? No, I'm not talking about busting your kids. There are, our top schools, our top rated schools in the county are under capacity. Hundreds of kids under capacity. You've got about eleven hundred seats to be used in two, in, I guess, three of the top schools in the county. Three of the most sought after areas in the county. And so people say, I wanna live in Union County, where they wanna live, in that district. So we can do better. And if we need, if there's something in this that we need to look at and say, okay, we need to definitely do this project. Uh, Catta, Catta's football stadium. My son goes to Catta, I'd love to have a football stadium there, but I honestly like going to his games at Walter Bickett because of nostalgia. I liked it. Uh, what they could use is some lights on the practice field. Now, if you want to spend a hundred thousand dollars on lights for practice field, that might work out fine. But five million for a new stadium, well, they've got a great stadium. Yeah, that's aggravating riding the bus over there, but saves millions of dollars. So, you know, I, again, there's nobody up here that has any animosity toward, toward, uh, the school board. We, we want to work with you, we desperately want to work with you and we want a plan. We need more time. We had South Piedmont, they're looking at a technology as part of their campus. And we're talking about not duplicating that effort, not, you know, what do we do? What, how do we do this and not duplicate that effort? Early colleges is being great, you know, what, what's more space can we provide for them, those types of things? I, I just honestly, if, if I were, if I were to plan a way to pass a bond, the redistricting, all that other stuff would be in that plan. But we need to work together. And, and do you feel, and I want your honest opinions as we go down, I mean, east to the head or whatever you wanna do it, do you really feel this is the best plan to take us forward as a board? Uh, I know what your staff has told you, I know what, I know you've sat down and you've gone through these and I know that you have agreements with some things and disagreements with other things. But can we do better and put this on in two years and give it a great chance of passing? Because I can tell you right now, there's gonna be a lot of people in the community fighting this. It's not just gonna be the east. Um, the east has traditionally voted against bonds. This time you're gonna have a lot of folks in the west that are gonna be educated that those schools are not over capacity. And it's gonna be a hard fought bond. And it's going to be a hard fought bond. So, I mean, how do you feel, do you feel like we can come up with a better plan for the next few years?
Well, as the one, one who voted against the CCP and the bond referendum, I guess I'll go first. I have several concerns. The number one concern is the hybrid concept. I was very disappointed in the supporting documentation, market study, whatever you want to call it, that justified 1,500 students would utilize that facility. I have safety concerns, combining community college students on a high school campus. I have traffic concerns. I think if you ask any parent who drops a kid off at Sun Valley Middle School, they'll tell you, no, we don't need 1,500 more cars on that, in that area. I think, I support the concept of academies. I think we have existing capacity in some of the high schools, existing high schools, Weddington one, to expand the academy system. Now, I talked initially when I ran, and I do support a new Sun Valley, but that does not appear to be feasible or realistic. In lieu of, I would advocate and support a outfit of the current facility. Athletic facilities upgraded, cafeteria, auditorium, offices, teacher work rooms, and existing legacy classrooms, and get Sun Valley ready for the next 50 years. I think that is a much more cost-effective alternative, and that's something that I would propose. I have concerns about other projects in the plan. South Providence, it makes no sense to me to, to invest $5 million in a facility of that age. You mentioned Catta Stadium. There are some concerns with the project, but also as a Union County taxpayer, I know a bond referendum, if passed of this scale, the tax increase in order to service the debt would be cataclysmic. I advocated from the beginning a ongoing series of smaller bonds that could replace retiring existing debt with minimal tax impact to handle the debt service. And I think that's the way we need to move forward, rather than one big pop to try and get everything. It's a six-year plan, why do we have to come up with all the money upfront? That's my two cents.
Well, my comments would be, there are some schools that can't wait two years. I live in District Four, I know firsthand, I have a child at Piedmont, I have a child at Porter Ridge, and, and I have ongoing conversations with both principals quite often. And just using Porter Ridge as the example, capacity is 1,400 at Porter Ridge High School. We're anticipating over 1,800 in August.
So what if, what if you did open up that number, that they could go to other schools that are under capacity? Would that help or hurt?
I mean, it might help a little bit, I mean, we really didn't get that many transfer requests last summer, in my personal opinion.
It's hard at high school, I think once you get to high school, you're pretty much set.
Well, and then you've got dual enrollment, and, and children are certainly hopping in their cars and going to other academies and SPCC.
And that's where the idea actually came from, was the presentation that you guys had at Piedmont Middle School, of saying, we are, we're going to open up these academies, and children can come here from all over Union County to those. So we've already opened the door, that's a good concept, and Catta is a good concept. We get kids from all over the county coming to that school, and even providing their own transportation, it's just a good concept.
You know, so, you know, just to answer your question, you know, I think there are absolutely some projects that maybe we could reevaluate and do some more homework, and get back to you, and possibly do those type of bonds in two years. But there's, I've got 11 schools that are critical right now across the county. And I've only mentioned one, but we've got 400.
So if we didn't do mobile classroom replacement, if we left mobile classrooms, because I was in a mobile classroom, I know it's a 30-year thing at least, because I've been in them, I was in them 30 years ago.
And Piedmont probably has some of those.
Luann, your former communications fellow, was my English teacher. So, so, yes, if, how many, how much, how much?
She's not watching.
How much, how much without the mobile classrooms do you need to do what you have to do? And with these older schools, if we can get through?
And I'm just going to use Porter Ridge High School as the example again, there are zero mobile classrooms at Porter Ridge. So, you know, there aren't any mobile classrooms helping that principal take care of 1,800 kids.
Why are there not any mobile classrooms?
Well, he must be stuck in the men or very large classes, you know, when you're taking some classes, you can have, you know, more students in some of those classes.
Do they have a floating, do they have a floating?
I've never heard him mention having floating classrooms.
Block schedule. They have block schedules.
So, so are there, is all classrooms are used throughout the day, or they have a, they have 15 empty classrooms?
I can't imagine him having 15 empty classrooms. I mean, because again, the capacity is 1,600, and come August, he's, he's already planning for over 1,800 students. So, you know, that's a lot of management going on right there. So going back to your original question, I think with the presentation that we've seen tonight, there's a lot of projects that we could do some more homework and put more thought into, and have planning and preparation. But, you know, there are four middle schools and four high schools right now, and two elementary, well, three elementary schools, to be honest with you. They needed help yesterday.
Which elementary schools?
Kensington, Newtown, and Western Union. And we do know that Kensington's kind of landlocked, so we don't, we really don't know how much, if anything, we can do there.
Okay, Kensington's not, are they in bad shape, or are they just over?
They're actually, I'm projecting to have more overcrowding than Newtown.
Okay, well Sandy Ridge is right up the road, and it's got 650 kids?
Yeah, 60, yeah, 60.
So it's a, again, it's a problem of placement.
And Kensington's not on the list, but when I'm looking at, you know, crowding issues coming down the pipe, you know, I, I'm keeping my eye very closely on three elementaries, four middles, and four highs, that I don't think we, you know, can wait two more years to get started on a.
My comment.
Oh, well, are you finished?
I'm done, okay.
Do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, I'm Joe Delaney. Experienced at Waringham High School, teacher's student, you can do that. We had, the last year was by itself before the Marvin split, we had 2,200 students, and we didn't have a portal. But I can tell you that was not an ideal circumstance. We didn't have a single open classroom. And we actually had teachers double and triple office spacing in the office spaces that were available, and had to take the library conference rooms for teacher offices. So it can be done, but that's one of the problems you face when you overuse the core by expanding the student population beyond what can be held within the building.
But we don't have those problems anymore. We built three high schools in that area, and now we have high schools that are a couple hundred kids, two, 300 kids, under capacity. We're in the opposite direction now, which is hard for some people to believe. Like I said, when I got back in, I was thinking, God, it must be terrible. It's not, it's completely, it's unbelievable how many less kids are in the schools than were 12 years ago.
But it also becomes a problem of dominoes. Three years ago, I taught for a year and a half at Marvin Ridge High School. I taught senior English, and I taught the ninth and 10th grade English. And because of funding beyond the issue with Union County, and this had nothing to do with Union County, class sizes got so big in some areas that you had, I actually had two English classes that had 40 students in each one, 42 and 43. But then you had the smaller classes because of the special programs that took up the same classroom space, because that's all that is available. And I'm not saying that that equates to solving the problem of school size. I understand what the issue is that you have perfectly. But I do think that, and I'm not, I'm not trying to sell you one way or the other on changing all of those things. But there are some things that force schools to do what they do, even though we can look and say, ourselves, it doesn't make sense. It's like issues of Title I. You get that money because you keep class sizes on it, you get that problem, you get that money because you are required to have special programs. And you might have classrooms with 16 kids, but you have special programs that have five and six in the same-sized classroom, which wipes you out. So it looks like the school is very undercrowded, but programmatically it's very overcrowded. And I'm not saying that's true in all cases.
Marvin definitely is not a Title I school, I would say it's probably, it was one of the top-performing schools and has been for many years. It's a great school with 602 kids there.
Oh, sure, sure.
Right, and they've got, yeah, we have to look at it, and they've got a pretty.
See, Union Elementary, where my daughter goes to school is Title I, and they have five mobile classrooms out there right now. Music class is totally one, she's, she was in one for two years, even though that was, you know, in second and third grade, she was out there. So, yeah, we're used to it, we're fine with it, but I was fine with it when I was in the mobile classrooms.
I think the whole process of basically saying, you know, not doing our homework, there's not a lot of homework. I think the process, well, I know, I think the process that you outlined, that we went through this, I mean, a lot of thought has gone into it, not that it couldn't be improved, obviously, in trying to work together to figure out how to spend our money, or where we place certain schools, or where we do additions, all that can be discussed. And you said earlier that McKibben talked about, you know, we're the sieve, we're, we're not, we're in this bucket, right? We can, we put a lot in, but we're, we're kind of maintaining where we are. And I think you can see that on the numbers, where, where 42,000 is on today, and 2025, we're about the same, about maybe 300 different. So it's pretty flat. And I think that's kind of a, maybe a good time to look at removing a lot of those, those mobile classrooms, knowing we're going to be at a, any kind of a constant level in a lot of these schools for the next 10 years. It's a great opportunity to, you know, bring a bond of whatever size to, to the, to the public in a presidential year elections, that we have good input, to see what do we do for the next 10 years, knowing we're going to be kind of on a steady keel. We're not going to have kind of the big, the big bubble we all talked about in the last couple of years. So I think the, overall, I like the plan, could there be, could there be some changes, you know, based on what we could do? Possibly, but I would hate to think we'd have to wait two years to.
Well, we're giving 17 million this year. It's not, I mean, the taxes are raised to give the capital. Maybe you look at your capital plan and say, if there, if there's something that needs to be done in the $5 million range, maybe over the next couple of years, you look at those, just take $5 million out of that 17 million and use it for something else. The roof should be getting to a point of being called up soon. So, so again, if we, if we keep working with you on the capital, and giving that, that amount of capital that you need, then, you know, just where you prioritize that money could make a big impact on the things that you're talking about. Like Melissa, you're talking about the, well, you're talking about the money that needs, and can't wait two years. Maybe you use the capital that we're giving you to address those immediate emergency needs. And then you'll still have capital left over, and you can only do so many projects at one time anyways.
Well, here's, here's my problem when I look at this. I see a lot of schools that are overcapacity that kids were having to two years ago. The kids that are going to be under, the schools that are under capacity are the ones that kids were pulled out of. You look at, Forest Hills High School is one of those schools that is actually going to have an increase in students, and they are not listed on the CCP anywhere. So where's, where does that make sense? Kensington, Kensington actually has a higher population than Newtown, and yet they have nothing listed either. It, it does not make sense to me when I look at, your proposal, if I back out the Sun Valley hybrid, you're proposing a cost of $364,000 for each mobile classroom you remove, and getting out of it, 200, you're spending $272,000 per student. And that's based on the ATC, which adds 500. If you don't do the ATC, you're looking at $127 million and getting zero additional capacity out of the schools, zero. And where the capacity goes, I'm actually, Porter Ridge, makes sense. That's where a lot of the growth is going, we see that, we see that whole area up there. But some of these schools, when we look at, and when I look at the numbers, just makes absolutely no sense. I mean, the whole purpose is to get rid of mobile classrooms. If they're old mobile classrooms, we can be much more cost-effective by buying brand-new upgraded mobile classrooms, get them in a state-of-the-art classroom for a lot less than $364,000, which is what this equates to. It, for me, I'm really struggling to see where we end up overall with the, with the plans proposed, other than a few items. I mean, there are some things that really do make sense. But spending $364,000 for each mobile classroom that's removed and adding zero capacity makes absolutely no sense to me. I mean, to me, that is not a need, that is a philosophical change.
There's one thing that I think we need, I'm reading McKibben in your report, and he said the impact of proposed Union Day Charter and Union Preparatory Charter schools, I'm not including.
Right.
That's 900, over 950 students. So you're talking about close to 49 classrooms.
And let's make sure, and as we said before, let's make sure that we know that some of those kids are all coming. And I like that, I think, Mr. Simpson, if you come up with the 750, saying that, is that, is that 25%? I mean, we don't know that all those kids are coming from.
But there's a thousand of them coming, according to Mr. Kavinsky.
From, from, from Union County public schools?
You don't, well, if you, if you look at enough to the, you're just saying 50%.
Well, right.
I mean, 50%.
And that's what I address.
They're registered now, go find out. You know, that's where I need to, because it may impact your situation at Porter Ridge, because one of the schools is right in that area, that'll make it very attractive.
Well, they're not high schools, the charter schools are high schools.
Well, I'm the charter school star. That's true, you don't, that's absolutely correct, but next year it's going to grow. And I tell you what, I've gotten approached, that, that particular charter school group, all you got to do is put a board together, we'll, we'll put another charter school together. There are people chomping at the bit for charter school. And we have to know what that impact is going to be before it goes to, we go putting brick and mortar.
And I know at least one of your elementary school principals reached out to a charter school to ask how many kids were enrolled, and they had a response back within a couple of days. So you do have some principals that are out there looking for, this impact was 19 students out of the elementary school. So they'll give you the information, I know the information's been provided. But you're talking about a net increase of 353 students over the next 10 years, not including 1,000 students for charter schools, at a minimum 1,000 students. I'm, I'm just trying to understand where, when there's so much capacity in some of the schools that kids were moved out of, and some of the schools that were growing, they're going to continue to grow. And I'm really looking, again, Porter Ridge is a great example, Porter Ridge and Monroe, both. I, I do understand the need for those, but I think the money would be better spent in planning those schools, rather than trying to remove classrooms from a school that's losing students over the next 10 years.
We, we have a seven o'clock meeting, Mr. Jerry Simpson.
Now, am I correct, because of the timeline given out by the state, that you pretty much have to make, have to make some kind of decision tonight?
Before the 27th.
Yes, 27th?
We, we've got it on our agenda tonight to make a decision tonight. However, our absolute deadline line is, is that we have to get bond language and amounts to the local government commission, no later than next Monday.
Ken, and you have, you just have a piece of your board here, you have two members, one was on facilities and the other was not on facilities, that's what she was telling us the question. Yeah, I hate that we didn't have their input, especially with building facilities. You know, I don't know if it'd be fair, if another five of you can make the decisions and make recommendations, I don't think it would be fair to even ask you guys for recommendations, not because of.
Oh, no, I mean.
Fair at all. We.
Yeah, but the board came together and the recommendation was the plan that we watched, so nothing had changed. We didn't come with negotiation powers tonight.
If, we want to work, we desperately want to make the relationship better. If we want to fix these problems, I'm just not sure that there might be a less expensive way for the taxpayers that we can solve the problems and we know of it. We're going to have our discussion tonight, you're welcome by us to stay around, I don't know if you can. Although they can or can't stay around for a meeting, but we do have to get into that, that'll be. Special meeting, and, okay. Anything else that y'all have for us? Thank you, I, do you feel like that this was productive?
Yes, I think it was about six months too late.
We should have been talking about it. And we have been talking about other things, but, and we apologize if it was not the July 11th timeframe, we did not know. apologize if it was not the July eleventh timeframe, we did not know, and as soon as we found out, we let you know that we had to move this up. We'll be in touch with you, too, and pushing to adjourn the special meeting. Make the motion to adjourn.